Most I'd like to welcome you all virtually and it's a pity we can't all be in a room with tea and scones. But that's how life is at the moment. My name is Shirley Clark and I'm the Heritage Officer with Monaghan County Council. And this is one of our projects that we've been doing this year. Just to say, if you would all stay on mute until the presentations are over and then there'll be a chance to put in some questions and you can put them in the chat. And then I can moderate them down at the end. This project has been funded by Monaghan County Council and the Heritage Council. And I'm going to do a five minute presentation first of all, and then I'm going to hand over from our wonderful team, from Flynn Fernie, environmental or ecologists. And so that will be Louise, Ian and Jennifer. And I'd like to thank them for their hard work of surveying that they did all summer in good weather and bad weather. Okay then, so let me see if I can move slide, next slide. Okay, so the Monaghan Heritage or the biodiversity and heritage plan, the newest iteration of that, that's the third one that we've had over the last 15 years, was adopted by the full county council last November. And in it, we are of a very strong focus on climate change and biodiversity loss, running as really cross cutting issues through all of the actions in the plan. And this is to recognise both the very seriousness of both of these issues. And indeed, they're both interrelated as we know, but these are serious contemporary societal concerns and environmental concerns with which we need to be concerned. And that's why biodiversity and heritage plan is focusing on them. And you can see there, our mission is to protect, conserve and advocate for our biodiversity, our tangible and intangible heritage. So that would be cultural heritage buildings, monuments and intangible things like folklore and place names. And contributing to sustainable development, to the sustainable development goals and to climate change mitigation and adaptation. And our vision is really that by 2025, the climate change and mitigation and adaptation, sustainable communities, functioning ecosystems, health and wellbeing is generally accepted in the county. And crucially, embedded in the activities of Monaghan County Council. Because as everyone knows, we do need great system institutional change in order to get where we need to get to for carbon emissions by 2030 and indeed for biodiversity loss. So in the heritage and biodiversity plan, we have 13 themes. And these were put together following consultation with the public. So those little icons there are memory gadgets for me and others to remember what themes we have in there. So let's see if I can remember them myself by using the themes. So starting from the top, so we have the dragonfly, so that's Monaghan's wonderful wetlands. Then the leaves, we're moving to native woodlands and hedgerows. And the bovine there is for high nature value farmland. The squiggle is actually the profile of the wonderful archaeological monument, the Black Pig's Dyke. Then we have megalithic monuments, we have historic buildings, vernacular heritage. And then also we have our domains and estates. Then also we're looking at people and our border heritage and cross community work. And graveyards, historic holy wells, our languages, both English and Irish and our use of English in County Monaghan. And then our intangible heritage. And then the world is actually for climate change and all our cross cutting issues. So those are the 13 themes that we have in the county heritage plan. And then to the right of that, you can see our hedgerow and native woodland. So what we have in the plan is really a large broad theme so we can adapt the plan as we go. And then we have an indicative sort of action plan to go with it. The action plans probably will change over the next five years, but the theme will remain the same. So for hedgerows and native woodland, we have that we are aware of the ecological and cultural role of hedgerows and native woodland. And we are aware of their inappropriate management and removal. And we will create awareness and build capacity of landowners for their management and reinstatement and celebrate good practice. And the very first thing we had on that action plan was to resurvey our, in 2020, this year 2021, our 2010 heritage survey, our hedgerow survey sites. And the team who surveyed will go through that now in about two minutes' time. And we also have in our workshops, to produce the heritage podcast or film, we did do a podcast this summer with Jennifer, who's here. And you can listen to that on Spotify or Apple Podcasts as Heritage at the Heart. And if you look through the five episodes there, you'll find one on hedgerows. And so you can pretend you're out on the summer lane on a summer day and enjoy that through your headphones anytime. And then also to look at the native woodland sites in the county. So that's just a brief overview of where we are and why we're doing this survey this year. So that's the contact details for the heritage office, should you wish to find us if you're not familiar with us already. We obviously have an email, which now seems a bit old fashioned, a website, which equally seems old fashioned, and Monaghan Heritage Forum Facebook page, and also we are on Twitter. So without further ado then, I just want to read a little poem. And before we start from Jennifer, Ian and Louise to give the results of the hedgerow survey. And I wish to read this poem because it's from a girl from Donegal and she's called Mary Charlie McGrath. And she recently spent time in the Troon Guthrie Centre and sent me this beautiful book. And I just wanted to read this poem because I think it's extremely relevant. So, before speech. These never talked, trees, water, flowers, all speechless, have no words, gestures, expressions. No force can make them. But if taken from us, we who have words for everything and nothing would become smaller, sadder, lifeless beings without these wordless things. And above our earth, space station crews circling the planet every 90 minutes say, how beautiful it is. See how land has been consumed by cities, how forests have dwindled, how ice fields on Kilimanjaro have melted. So I just wanted to share that with you before we start and just particularly in the context of those who are circling our planet and those who are going on space tourism and maybe we should look closer to home. Okay then, so can everybody see the County Monaghan Hedgerow Survey screen from Flynn Fernie?
Yes.
So I'll leave myself and hand over to the team. Thanks very much.
So, hi everyone, I'm going to kick it off here and thank you very much Shirley for that lovely introduction. Yeah, so my name's Ian Douglas, I'm here from Flynn Fernie along with my colleagues Jennifer and Louise. And so we're just going to give you basically a rundown of our results. But also just kind of give you some context for hedgerows in general. And also just kind of speak about good practice and what we should be kind of moving towards over the next couple of years. So the value of our hedgerows, our hedgerows are interesting because they're not just a physical landscape feature. Yeah, hello?
Yeah, Ian, if you turn off your camera because your wifi is pretty poor. So if you turn off your camera, it might help your, the voice to come over. Thanks.
Can you hear me now? Okay?
Aye.
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Right, so yeah, our hedgerows, they're important physical features in our landscape. But historical features, you know, a lot of them were planted 200 to 300 years ago, but some, like the ones we find on county boundaries and the ones we find around townline boundaries go back thousands of years. So they're a treasure trove of cultural heritage. But like anything that's been around for that long, biodiversity also gets to take hold. And so they're hugely important for the flora and fauna and for different things related to water quality. And also as, as you know, infrastructure, valuable infrastructure on our farms and an important, an important resource that within the context of farming. So if you could just kick on there, Louise please. And so we have looked at hedgerows using the hedgerow appraisal system. So this was published by the Heritage Council, I think in about 2010. And it's aimed to create a standardized system for the evaluation of the natural capital and condition of our hedgerows. What they wanted to do was to find a way to take a baseline of where our hedgerows are at. And so we could see change over time, but also try to find what the biggest problems were. And so we could be more focused and more directive in how we go about fixing them. And so the way we looked at hedgerows here is we, the main areas we looked at were floristic recordings. So we were interested in the abundance and the diversity of the trees and shrubs we found in our hedgerows, of climbers, of the ground flora and ferns. And we're also concerned about the structure of our hedgerows. So what kind of shape they're in, are they, how high they were, how dense they were, and how big the gaps were and how many gaps there was. We also looked at the historical significance and the landscape significance of our hedgerows. So we checked on the old OS maps, were they, were they there when the first maps were produced? Do they have connectivity to other landscape features, like woodlands and wetlands? Where do they sit in the landscape and how important that would be? And then from, from, and then one of the most important from a modern context is different techniques that we're seeing. Are we seeing filial cutting, any links, what's been the impact of fencing? And what's been the impact of other, other things that are causing hedgerow degradation? And so I think we can move on there. And now I'm going to hand you over to Louise and Louise is going to go through some of the, some of the, some of the findings of our reports so far.
Perfect, that's the results slide up there. Can everyone see? Perfect. Okay, so as Ian said, we had different categories for our floristic recordings and the shrub layer was one of those categories. So this is just a small snippet of the species that we found when surveying. And in total, there were 35 species identified in the shrub layer and 20 of those species were native plants. So we can see here the asterix denotes introduced species like sycamore or the snowberry here. So our most common hedgerow shrub was hawthorn and this came out at about 94.4% of the hedges. Very similar to 2010 when it was around 95%. Blackthorn is still the second most popular species found in shrub and it followed holly, which was similar to 2010. So one moment. Okay, so in our 30 metre sample strip, the average number of species found was around 3.5 species. And this is actually less than 2010 when around 3.62 species were found. The number was much higher in townland boundary hedges and we found in general that these townland boundary hedges were more diverse for all of the floristic categories. And so obviously some of these hedges date back to mid 14, 15 century. And yet their, their history and obviously their diversity of flora means that they're optimum for protection. And 13% of our hedges only contained one species. So this was a significant increase in mono species hedges since 2010, when it was only recorded to be 3% of the hedges. So yeah, there's basically a decrease in diversity there. And the UK biodiversity action plan defines a species rich hedge as one that contains four or more native woody species. This was found in 23.3% of our sample hedges. Again, it decreased from 2010 when 37% of the hedges were shown to be species rich. And obviously there is issue with this because the less diverse the hedges, the less the range of flowering times and the less food and resources provided for nature. It's also a problem when we don't have as many native species as they're generally more important for biodiversity than the non-native counterparts. So a second floristic category recorded was the tree layer. I think here we had around 25 different species and around 20 of those were native. So the most common tree species was ash and that was around 74.8%. Hedgerow trees were recorded as present in around 87% of our hedges, which is an increase in the recordings of trees, a slight increase. And again, ash is the most common species and that's followed by hawthorn and willow and sycamore was fourth. So the problem with ash being our most dominant hedgerow species is obviously ash dieback. So this disease is prevalent in Ireland and it's expected to cause the death of the majority of our ash, of our ash trees in the next two decades. So when we sampled, we found that 90% of the hedges that contained ash also displayed signs of dieback. And this obviously has implications for landscape, for agriculture, biodiversity and for climate. In this case, under planting, replanting of dying ash with alternative native species should be implemented as soon as possible. Obviously to try and counteract this fact. So in terms of this, we also checked when trees are present, if they were predominantly immature, immature or predominantly mature and mature. So the good news is there is less hedges that just contained mature species that in comparison to 2010. But there is still a lot of hedges that were either mature or predominantly mature. And that's obviously an issue when we think about the continuity of these hedges, especially when considering the fact that so many of our hedges do have ash trees and so many of those ash trees are going to experience ash dieback. An increase of ash in the canopy of the trees was also seen and this is probably also related to the amount of ash dieback that was found. And we can see here, we basically, it's basically split into categories of over 25%, 10 to 25% and then less than 10% or none. So we found that over 25% was around 36% of the hedges in comparison to 2010 when that was only 10%. So ivy is actually beneficial for a lot of wildlife and it's the native food plant for a lot of our birds and our invertebrates. But it becomes a problem when the tree is in a state of natural decline and it can infest the canopy and basically cause the tree to become top heavy. And when we have like strong weather conditions or strong winds, this can cause the trees to topple. So that's obviously not great to see, but it is probably in relation to the amount of ash dieback. There is also a decrease in semi-natural grasslands for the adjacent land class. So a semi-natural grassland would be one with a low input of fertilizer and that hasn't been recently reseded basically. And it's important for livestock, for pollinators, but also as resilience to changing climates. Semi-natural grasslands are more drought resilient and better at retaining water than the improved grass on type. So this was good to see in 2010, around 45% of the fencing was found to be fixed to stems. So that's decreased and we found it only to be around 15%. So this is obviously a practice that's not commonplace anymore. And that's really, really good because obviously it's not great for the trees. And in terms of fencing in general, then post and wire was really the most common method of fencing. And there's still a lot of fences, a lot of hedges that had no fencing at all. So in these cases, sometimes there, there might have been drains etc. So was it necessarily that the hedge was the, the main barrier for livestock? And another category assessed was the amount of gaps in the hedge. And again, we have four categories, it's greater than 25%, 10 to 25%, 5 to 10 and then less than five or, or no gaps. So there's obviously a significant increase in this category, the category, sorry, of over 25%. Only around 3% of the hedges in 2010 had greater than 25% gaps. And actually, we found that this number was around 36%. So there is a general decline in stock group hedges and it kind of points towards reduced, reduced management. So Jennifer is going to take you through the rest of the results. Thanks very much.
Thank you Louise. And so I'll just talk about another facet, which is degradation of hedges. And we talk about banks, walls and shelves, which are the types of structures that hedgerows would be planted on. So a bank is like a bank of earth, a wall would include like an old stone wall and that's not very common in Monaghan, it's probably more in the West. And then you have a shelf, which is sort of like a drop between one piece of farmland and another. And that's generally the three types that you would find a hedgerow planted in. So in terms of degradation, it's not brilliant news. Hedgerows with no degradation has fallen. And then the amount of hedgerows with severe and minor degradation has unfortunately risen quite a bit in the last 10 years as well. So next slide Louise. And yeah, so the picture there just shows an example of a degraded hedge. Where you can see some degradation along the bank. And unfortunately, you know, poaching by cattle leaves the roots exposed. Often maybe the cattle are up to the very edge of the field, which, and there's no verge left. And which means that poaching is very, it's very, has a lot of effect on the amount of degradation. And it means that the hedgerow is more susceptible to disease then as well. So that's just another picture of an exposed bank and you can see, you know, it's, it's not that healthy looking. So in terms of management then, the flail, the mechanical flail is the most common tool that's used for management. And you've probably seen some of them out and about recently, since the first of September. Well, at least they should have been since the first of September. So it's, it's quite a powerful machine and it often cuts the hedgerows in different types of profiles. So it can be a cut box profile, it can be a shape or cut one or both sides. And so the cut box shape is, is very popular and especially with the mechanical flails. But unfortunately, it's not always the best for biodiversity and because the hedgerow will not grow back as much as it should. Then you've got your short term unmanaged and long term unmanaged. And we found that long term unmanaged hedgerows had increased quite significantly since the last survey was done. And that's just an example of a flailed blackthorn hedge. You can see that it's quite exposed and it's been very roughly cut and that leaves it more susceptible to, you know, disease and dampness setting in. Whereas if it was cut sort of more cleanly, you know, it's, it's definitely better and it's easier for more growth to come back the following year. And in terms of assessing conditions, so Ian might have mentioned some of this earlier in terms of structure. We would have looked at the width profile and density of the hedges. And we looked at the amount of gaps that they would have had. And I just spoke about the degradation there and we also looked at the nutrient rich species. So nutrient rich is not a positive thing in general. It's where you would have a lot of growth of nettles, docks and cleavers and things like that. And it reduces the species richness of other flora and also the percentage of ivy in the canopy. So as Louise mentioned, that has quite increased since the last survey as well. And so the amount of hedges in favourable condition since the last survey has unfortunately reduced quite significantly. You can see in the photograph, that would be an example of quite a well maintained hedge. It's quite healthy looking and it's got a verge of one or two metres on, on the edge, which blocks it off from the farmland and gives the species a chance to grow along the verge. And then you've got hedgerows in unfavourable condition, unfortunately, these have, have risen. And so you can see there an example, you have a lot of nettles and nutrient rich species on the verge of the hedge. You've got a lot of ivy, ash dieback and quite a bit of gappiness in the hedge as well. And so that's unfortunate that that has risen in the last 10 years. And so in terms of nutrient rich species, which I've just mentioned, you can see that and there's, there's been multiple instances in our survey of slurry, which has been spread too close to the field boundary. And which means that you'll often get this kind of fillum of, of slurry and fertilizer over the vegetation on the edge. Which, you know, is, is quite unfortunate because it, it leaves it more difficult for that vegetation to be healthy and to grow. It interferes with the photosynthesis process and all the rest. So, you know, that, that, that strip of one to two metres at the very edge of the field is quite crucial in keeping that healthy. And so I'll just talk about policy and legislation. Ian mentioned at the very beginning, you know, hedgerows have been a feature of the Irish landscape for a very long time, back to the Bronze Age, I believe. But they became very prevalent in the 17th to 19th centuries when we got the enclosure acts, which came in. And this coincided with the privatization of lands and they were split up. And the best way to do that, they thought, was with hedgerows, which is a great thing because they're, they're brilliant highways for biodiversity and especially currently, we have a lack of native woodland in the country. So hedgerows are brilliantly beneficial for biodiversity. And there's three main types of legislation which protect hedges. So you've got the Wildlife Act 1976, amended 2000, section 40. So you may have heard a lot about this, like between 1st of March and 31st of August. And that's the period when you're not allowed to cut hedgerows, except in certain circumstances. Mainly that's to do with road safety issues and there might be, you know, road, sort of housing developments and things like that. But that ties in with the Heritage Act 2018, section eight. So 2018, I think there was a little bit of controversy because they were threatening, the minister at the time was threatening to perhaps reverse the legislation and include the month of August as a hedge cutting period. But due to a lot of fight back from environmental groups and the public, they decided to keep the month of August in there thankfully. And as I mentioned, the Roads Act 93, so under that, part of it is road safety for cutting back of hedgerows. The last three there, you've got environmental impact assessment or screening regulations. And so they came in in 2011 and basically that means that if a farmer is to create farmland up to five hectares, a field up to five hectares, or to remove hedgerows over 500 metres. Ideally, he really has to get, or she has to get a screening done. Unfortunately, County Monaghan is the only county that we've seen that hasn't had, had any of these screenings done, which is unfortunate. And then you've got the cross compliance regulation, which is basically where if a line of hedging or drainage ditch is to be removed, since 2009, the farmer or landowner should mean, should replace this before they actually carry out the works. But unfortunately, it's quite weak and often it's not followed up on. And finally then the nitrates derogation, if a farmer is involved with this, they need to manage their hedge in two different ways. Either allow a thorn bush, like a hawthorn or blackthorn, to, to stay every 300 metres within the hedge. Or the other one is to cut their hedge, a third of their hedge every three years on rotation. So there's a bit of So um there's a bit of bit of management involved there if the hedge is to be healthy. And then finally, I'll speak about the cap reform and eco- eh eco schemes. So the um common agricultural policy. Um currently, we're on GLAS three and GLAS is the Green Low Carbon Agri- Environmental Scheme, which will run until the end of this year and it includes eh quite a few measures on hedgerow maintenance. Currently, we're on REAP, which is the um results based environment agri pilot programme and that will run to the end of twenty twenty two. And on the right hand side, you'll see eh part of the assessment there includes eh the different conditions of hedgerows. And um over one point five metres in height is good and there's lots of vegetation happening there in A and B. Whereas in C, um unfortunately, that's where you have a lot of gappiness. Um kind of um badly cut and um growth eh doesn't occur a- as well as it should. And so we think that the reforms in cap um that are coming up will be more results based and there'll definitely be um more focused eco schemes that will hopefully include better maintenance of hedgerows. So thanks very much. Hand you over to Ian.
Eh so back to you now. And I'm just going to speak about eh good hedgerow management. Um eh the way we manage hedgerows is eh some of the thinking behind us eh can often be misguided or are based on 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 kind of strange ideas. Eh so some of the reasons that are often cited for for cutting hedgerows and for giving good reason for 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 cutting your hedgerow like like the on the left of this picture is to let light into your grass and to 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 improve visibility on the roads. But often eh I I I've heard of people just wanting to be able to see their cattle over the hedge. Um eh there's also a very antiquated notion of eh tidying up the countryside and keeping everything nice and regular. Um which, you know, i- is 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 something that's in 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 all of us. We all like our tidy gardens and and everything else, but that's that's eh a kind of a longer term change that we need to consider. Um and also just to create more room for grass and for crops. Um which is true, you will get more room for your grass and your crops. But you'll have to eh ask how much money you'll have to spend to do that eh and and eh what the what the cost benefit analysis is for you to do that and also the impacts of doing it. So but hedgerows do have to be managed. Um eh so real honest reasons for cutting hedgerows eh that stand up ours to maintain a soft proof barrier. Um to keep the vegetation away from wires eh and gates and fences. Eh so anyone who's got electric fences will know that eh if you if you don't keep your vegetation back, they'll just earth. And eh also to manage grub encroachment, particularly if you've got a lot of gorse in your hedge or um a lot of eh blackthorn. Next slide there please. And so we'll just show some examples of good hedgerow management. Um and so w- we have to think about it um from our needs, from the needs of the of our enterprise eh whether it's beef or or sheep or or crops. Um but also, we also have to be considered in the needs of wildlife. Um if you're eh eh um if you're in a dairy system or a beef system eh which probably be the two most popular eh in Monaghan. You know, eh y- your animals need shelter. If they're out early in the spring, like the wicked hard spring we had this year. Um you know, they need to be able to, they need to be able to get in against the hedge to give themselves, give themselves some some um some shelter. And but also you have to consider the heavy weather, eh the hot summers that we have as well. So eh having a good, robust hedgerow is going to give animals shade. And and if it gets too hot for cattle, cattle lose condition and lose weight. Um and you know, you're gonna, you're gonna stop getting the gains that you're you're gonna need to keep your system efficient. Um it can be expensive to cut hedgerows as well. Um y- you're you're talking eh upwards of three or four hundred euro eh to do a box cut on both sides for eh maybe two hundred metres a hedge. So depending on 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 how much cutting you have to do. Um you could be easily throwing a lot of money away for things like tidying up the countryside or having, being able to see your cattle over the hedge. Um but you also have to give it a broader context. We have to think about how important these things are for for things that are struggling in our, in our eh in our natural society. Um so hedgerows are so important for for the likes of our hedgehogs, our butterflies. And for the invertebrates, the ladybirds that help our 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 crops. Um so when 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 you're thinking about managing your hedgerow, think about why you're doing it. Think about your profits, think about the holistic needs of your enterprise. Um and think if this all, if this management strategy is going to work for you. So we're just look at two different eh kind of broad methodologies for managing our hedgerows. So the traditional management was laying, so this beautifully laid picture we have here on the left. So that's cutting through eh live trees um and laying them over and stitching them all together to create a stock proof, living stock proof fence. And that's going to last you longer than any post and wire system. Um it's a bit of work eh initially, but it's obviously eh it's it's a great, it's a great end result. Um and look, we're not going to say that we're all going to go back to this eh style. We would love to see communities and other people doing it and and farmers doing it to an extent. Eh because it's great for biodiversity and shelter and it's a huge part of our our country's heritage. Um what eh good modern eh hedgerow management techniques were shown in this picture below. So as you can see in this picture, we eh have a nice big thick elder hed- hedgerow, um five or six metres height. And it's also important to remember that if you, for every metre um of your hedgerow, you get three metres um of shelter on the opposite side. So that's maybe four or five metres high there. Um so that's ten or fifteen metres of eh of 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 shelter on the other side. So what we what we're looking to do is we're looking to get that fence back about two metres from the base of your hedgerow. That stops your animals getting their heads over and and pooching and biting and browsing in it when you don't want it. Um so that gives this lovely little grassy verge where we get a chance for flowers to grow, where we um get eh opportunities for insects and for eh predatory things like eh spiders. Um so then when we want to go and clear that, because ob- obviously we can't leave it like that all the time. We whip down the wire eh and we can either let our cattle in at it and and they'll they'll thank you for it. They'll love the opportunity to get in there and to to broaden their diet, you know, to do some browsing. Eh to eat some fruits and some nuts eh which are really important for macronutrient or micronutrients eh in their diet. And also it just helps them eh live a more natural life um and is good for their animal welfare. Um if we're going to cut it eh, what we'd look to do is flail the ground. Um and flail eh the, just take the front of it. Don't have to go in too hard or too deep, just cut it back so it's at the same amount every year. Don't even cut up too high, just cut it, cut it as high as you need, but you'd probably don't need to go any higher than two metres. Um so just on our next slide now, we're we'll just look at um how we go about eh eh establishing eh new hedgerows and eh the management of a young hedgerow. So eh if you look even on a lot of the Chaga stuff, they'll tell you that a hedgerow should be a a white thorn hedge. And people love a good thick white thorn hedge. And eh that's fantastic, but if you just keep a a a box, a tightly grown eh white thorn hedge and don't let it out, it's no use. It's for biodiversity. So what we really want is to see eh species diversity, you know. We should be looking for eight or ten different species. Um we can still have white thorn as fifty or sixty percent. But we ideally, we want to get some oaks in there and some hazel and some wild cherry and crab apple and rose. Um it's going to give us, as Louise was talking about earlier, the different flowering times. So you're creating a continuum of food resources throughout the growing season. And we also want to think about it from things that grow tall and things that grow bushy. Um so what we can do there is we can, if 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 we want to prune our hedge, we can prune them back. Eh prune back our hawthorns there in year two to five or six inches off the ground. And then you'll get a good basal density in your hedgerow while still allowing your 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 more, your trees proper, like your cherries and your your ho- your oaks and and that to grow up and get away. Um so you'll get that multi levelled effect as well eh with time. And then, you know, we're getting into the system of where we breast it eh in in the coming years. And if we need to top it, we can, we can top between the big trees and just leave the eh leave the leave eh eh leave the big trees to grow and just cut the things that are growing bushy. Um how we go about establishing something like this? Um so it's been shown that if you want to get a hedgerow going well um the best thing to do is to prep the ground first. So if you can get in with a digger or if you're really organised, get in with a plough at the end of your summer. Um a plough with a strip of ground, hit it with a harrow. Um and if you can get some, get some sort of a mulch. So you can see in this picture here, they used um they used wood chip, but you could use straw. Eh you could even use grass if you want. That's going to make it easier for you in the long term and it's going to keep weeds down. But it's also going to protect your young trees from drought. Um and also eh give a source of slow released nitrogen and 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 eh carbon for your for your young and your developing trees. Um and you know, it doesn't have to take, it doesn't have to take a huge amount of room. So this picture here is from a scheme um where they planted three eh three hundred metres of hedgerow in a five hectare field. And that only worked out in less than two per cent of the eh of the entire area of the field. So you know, if if you're a farmer and 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 you can't and you say you can't afford two per cent of the grass area, it's it's not going to make your business viable. You know, you're prob- your business is probably under a bit of stress. So we can make room for things like hedgerows. We just have to um, we just have to have a good mindset and 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 obviously funding and funding and and support from from the government and from eh state authorities is also very important. Hit on there. So just eh to summarise the results of our hedgerow survey. Eh so hedgerow species diversity is in decline, unfortunately eh in in the county. Eh mono species hedgerows are more common eh than in twenty ten. Um ash is still the most abundant tree in our hedgerows eh and that accounted for seventy two per cent of hedgerows eh of trees wi- inside the hedges. Ninety per cent of our sampled hedges eh which contained ash sadly showed as signs of ash dieback. And you know, that's, it's not going away, that's going to be here for for good. Um reduction in the practice of fencing to stems eh was seen with benefits to tree health. A thirty three per cent increase in hedges with a large percentage of gaps um was observed. Eh increases in severe and minor degradation of banks, walls and shelves. So the actual, the the some of the structures of our hedgerows. Um a ten per cent increase in hedges with unfavourable conditions. Eh ten per cent decrease in hedges in favourable conditions, so eh kind of equating to the same thing. Eh and forty per cent of hedges containing eh over twenty per cent nutrient rich species. So your nettles and your docks and your and your eh creeping thistles. Um so what we're seeing is we're seeing the quality of our hedges going down. Um the the diversity of our hedges going down. Um so we really need to think about how how we're selling hedgerows and and how we're valuing them. Um and then how we're encouraging farmers to make the right decisions. So that's about it from us. Um just to say eh many thanks to Monaghan County Council and to the Heritage Council eh for making this possible. Big thanks to Shirley and Sandra for all your support and for for bringing us on eh board for this project, really fun one. Eh out and about during the summers eh in in nice weather eh rambling around the fields of Monaghan. Um I think farmers probably didn't know what what to make of us in most of the cases. Um big shout out to to Neil McKenna eh who was a huge part of this project. Um he he done a lot of our surveys and he's the first ecologist to bring an umbrella surveying with him. Eh we all thought he was mad eh, but now I think we're all going to invest in umbrella for winter. So um thank you very much and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much Ian. And thanks to Jennifer and Louise as well for that eh very comprehensive presentation on the um hedgerow survey results for this year. And I suppose I must say um that it's, you know, it's, the results are pretty stark. And there's a lot of detail, detailed um um I suppose characteristics that are surveyed as part of that report. And you could see that on one of the very first slides, that comprised the floristic diversity, the tree species, the condition of the hedges and even the structural composition, whether they're gappy, whether they have wire, all of those types of characteristics as well. And then, of course, the percentage of hedgerow species eh or tree species in the hedges um primarily comprising ash, ninety per cent of which are demonstrating um signs of ash dieback. And then, of course, the nutrient enriched species would show that we have both an increase in species which can tolerate nutrients and a decrease in species rich grasslands adjoining the hedgerows. So I suppose all in all, those results said to me that there's been an inten- an intensification of land management, but a decrease in the management of the biodiversity features. Um and um we will take questions now. So if you wish to put one in the chat, I see one coming in there from Brian. Um or if you um wish to um put your hand up. So Lorcan Scott um has asked, and he's said, well done all. Would it be possible to estimate the carbon loss between the baseline reports twenty ten and the twenty twenty one review survey? Well, eh that's a tall order, I would say. We'd have to, we'd have to eh quantify the age class of all the trees and have figures for how much carbon are sequestered by tree species. Um I suppose it could be done roughly. Um Lorcan, um if anybody from the team has a an answer to that, um please come in. I don't know of um a proper hedgerow carbon survey yet, but maybe there's one out there that we could use as a as some sort of a, an equation to work it out.
Um so I I've little, little word on it, not much. Um it could in in some ways be eh figured out. Um so as a broad brush figures, and you can see how broad they are, um that um eh eh hedgerows have the potential to sequester somewhere between zero point six and three point three or three point five tonnes of CO two per hectare per year. So if we were, if we were to assess the area eh of hedgerow that's lost and the kind of density of it, we would be able to get some number. But i- it's it's like all of these things, eh eh they're hard enough to um to estimate in in real time. Eh but eh twice as hard to estimate retrospectively. Eh but we can, we can, we can definitely make an assumption that the trend eh, the trend is towards a loss of CO, loss of CO two capture as opposed to eh CO two drawdown.
Yeah, I suppose eh I suppose we could certainly say there's the eh the gap or the hedgerow that's lost, we could quantify that in some way. But I suppose from the point of ecosystem services, looking at the figures, you would possibly you could possibly establish that the carbon sequestration function has declined in the hedges based on the survey. To what degree, um I don't know, or you maybe you could say that they're no longer acting as a sink um because they're not being managed properly. Um and then Brian asks, were there particular survey sites or areas? And if so, were they so, were they selected? And we could definitely answer that. Eh were there parts of the county that were worse, better than others? So um who wishes to take that one from the team?
I can actually show you this. Sorry, I'll quickly go back to this. Yes, I think we might have actually. So eh we basically re-surveyed the sites from the two thousand and ten survey and they were chosen by random sampling methods. So I think eh sample squares were chosen at a certain distance. And then inside those sampling squares eh random hedges were chosen. Eh we also did a survey of hedges that are connected to native woodlands. So the results that we've actually eh talked about here are from the baseline survey. But eh in our report that will be published, we'll also have eh some results that will be about eh these native woodland sites.
And can I say, um were there parts of the county that were worse or better than others?
Um I wouldn't like to say that. No, I it's some, I suppose some areas were, but not like specifically parts of the county. Um I suppose we can, as we go through the results, that that'll probably become a bit more clear as well. But yeah, I think it was very general realistically, it was kind of.
Well, we can't say, we can say that that the the hedges that are older, that are the old Thailand boundaries are more floristically diverse. And that the ones that are connected via a corridor to a native woodland site are also more diverse. That was certainly the twenty ten findings and I'm assuming they're similar.
Yeah, the the Thailand boundaries eh hedges definitely were. At the native woodland hedges, we still have to do the analysis of a few of them, but it looks to be the case.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so Brian wants to know if the problems were worst, worst in improved grassland areas. And Jo Shannon wants to know, does the team feel that the cap reforms would have any significant impact on hedge restoration? So what about the improved grassland and the native grassland sites, the comparison? Is there a comparison that we could do between those, I wonder?
I think for the species-rich hedges, they were really beside the improved grasslands as well. So I think that's kind of one, one thing that we can look out for. But we could definitely, I've that written down, so yeah, it could be possible to try and look at. A correlation between a lack of diversity and improved grasslands. It could be very interesting to see.
Yeah, just to have a feeling.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then the cap reforms, and there's been a lot of talk about this recently, obviously, they, they were looking for a five percent biodiversity. Gain on farms, even though I think farmers might have ten percent at the moment, but I think they've got four percent. And then there are all, of course, the results-based payment schemes that are in the country at the moment, which are geographically. Designed to be kind of, I suppose, site-specific or, you know, landscape-specific. So does the team feel that the cap reforms would have any significant impact on the hedge restoration? Who wants to take that one?
I can maybe try, just, just from what I've seen recently, it seems that. Like the eco schemes to date in the last sort of few years, like the REAP scheme that's going on currently. And some of the GLAS schemes definitely have taken hedgerows into account and there has been. Quite a lot done by farmers in that respect, who've been part of the schemes. But it's unclear at the minute exactly what eco schemes will be under the cap reform that's coming in from twenty twenty three. I think it depends on the take-up as well. But it will be more results-based, definitely, which is promising because to date maybe. It's been unclear. What, what effect hedgerow and grassland management has had. I think it's promising and I think there definitely will be more. Sort of emphasis on hedgerow management. But it's, it's hard to say at the minute just how effective it'll be until they're put in place.
Okay, thanks Jennifer. Well, certainly, I suppose that these results will feed into something. Useful for agricultural practices in the county and certainly will be endeavouring to get this report into as many hands as possible. Lorcan again said that the Heritage Council supported a Birdwatch Ireland project this year called. Farmland Bird Hotspot Mapping Project. My goodness, it sounds like some sort of a, a fun day out for birds. But which should overlay very nicely on your work. Well, thanks Lorcan, we'll get that mapping detail from you. If you can share it or if Birdwatch can share, that'd be fantastic. Fergal asks, did any hedgerow surveyed show evidence of providing habitats for fauna such as hedgehogs, bats, et cetera? Anybody?
Ian? I, I could jump in there, I suppose. Yeah, well, hedgerows, hedgehogs, hedgehogs are a funny one because they're so prevalent. I actually found one in my garden last night and I don't know, I've never seen a hedgehog in five years. So there, there's always to know what they're doing. But, but a hedgehog would be, would be quite prevalent in all of our hedgerows. Bats is an interesting one. With the bats, we would. You would, you would expect to find bats in big old mature trees, trees that have holes in them or have lost branches or have bits that are rotting in them. So we would have found evidence of that here and there. Bats also do a lot of roosting in old buildings and old houses, particularly ones that are stone. One thing that we might see, now this is just my own theory, but one thing that we might see with, with, with ash dieback. Is that a lot of these big old ash trees that are left standing are going to become very holy and, and, and rot from the inside out. So we might actually see that these, that these dead ash trees start becoming kind of important, important roost sites for bats. And for other birds that are making comeback like, like, like woodpeckers. So yeah, I'd say, I'd say there could be a bit, bit in that, all right.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so that seems to be the end of the questions. Just to say that the report, when it's completed, which will be in the next month or so, will be available on our website. But as you can see, there's a lot more to do here. We have engaged with Chagask, with Catherine Keena. And we'll be certainly working with her to see what can be done about these issues. Hedgerows are very important in the landscape in Monaghan. They're important for wildlife corridors and species movements. They're important, obviously, for carbon sequestration, if we could quantify it, and for loads of other functions such as nutrient absorption, actually. Even though that seems to have a detriment on the hedgerows themselves, on their floristic diversity. So we have a lot of work to do, I suppose, and this survey actually points towards us having a lot of improvements to make. And it has to be a collective effort between even the planning service of the local authority, our environmental section. And indeed, landowners and communities out there. And certainly we need a lot more advocacy for hedgerows and their benefits. So I'd like to thank you all and we have all your emails, so we can send you the summary report when we have it. Directly to your inbox, should you wish it. And to, once again, thanks, thanks to our team for their survey work, to Jennifer, to Ian, to Louise. And to Neil and also to Billy of Flynn Fernie, who are our local ecological company. Who are very excellent in all the work that they do. And I agree with Brian, we need enforcement to stop ongoing destruction of hedgerows, absolutely. And that agricultural regulation that we can see that's not being implemented here in Monaghan is a key factor in that, actually. So thank you very much, everybody, and continue to advocate for your hedges. And we'll try to get some good resources up on our website with regard to hedges and their management, et cetera. So that we have a little bit more information up there for everybody. So thanks again to our funders, to the Heritage Council and to Monaghan County Council. And we look forward to seeing you all again soon. And I go out, move forward and mind the hedges. Okay, thanks very much, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Go on.